It is six o'clock, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. And welcome everybody here. You know, tonight we had a celebration of service of all the teachers, transportation, district education people. And we thank y'all. We see a lot of same faces in here. We thank y'all for the service, the principals, our district employees, the service that y'all do, the unthankful service that y'all commit to us. So just know we, this board up here truly appreciates the service y'all give us. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Rucker to introduce our B C students tonight.
All right. So tonight we have Caroline Boone here. I don't think Nigel was able to join us tonight, but Caroline is prepared to do the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Caroline is a senior at Brooklyn Casey High School. She is president of the National Honor Society. Caroline is actively involved with F C A, Latin Club, Sustainability Club, and Bearcat Buddies. She assists with the Stepping Out Dance Studio. After high school, Caroline plans to attend the University of South Carolina to pursue a degree in early childhood education. Nigel is a senior at Brooklyn Casey High School. He plays football for the Bearcats. Nigel's plan after high school is to go to a four-year college and major in either cybersecurity or mechanical engineering. So welcome. We're glad to have you here tonight.
If everyone will please bow their heads.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us here today. We thank you for this opportunity to be able to come together as a district to celebrate the many achievements of our schools, as well as make decisions that will shape our future. We ask for your guidance as those in leadership discuss and make decisions that impact our schools, teachers, and students. Please help them to work together for the good of our schools and community. May this meeting be filled with collaboration and a shared commitment for our district. I ask that you bless the board members, administrators, staff, and families. In your name I pray, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Caroline.
All right. And I forgot to mention that Ms. Wooton is not with us tonight, and so we send our regards to her. But we are gonna move on with the consent agenda and with no objections, the consent agenda stands approved as presented. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Hafner for accomplishments and honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First up tonight, I'd like to invite Brooklyn Casey High School Assistant Principal Ryan Van Omen to the podium to introduce us to a B C educator who just received a national award.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board and Dr. Hafner. It is my honor to be here with you tonight with this amazing special educator from Brooklyn Casey High School. The National Association of Special Education Teachers has selected Ms. Haley Williamson as one of the winners of the two thousand and twenty-five Outstanding Special Education Teacher Award. This award is bestowed upon special education teachers who have demonstrated truly exceptional achievement in the field of special education. It recognizes and rewards the special skills and excellence of special educators throughout the United States. We are honored to have Ms. Williamson at Brooklyn Casey High School. She champions for unity. She leads our Bearcat Buddies group. She works tirelessly to make us a unified champion school. We host events for Unified Champions of South Carolina, and we cannot be more grateful and more proud of Ms. Williamson.
I have a list of people I need to thank, so let me get that up. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and Dr. Hafner. I'm humbly honored to be here and accept this award at the national level. Being a special education teacher is something I've always wanted from a young age, so it's truly an honor. My name may be on the certificate, but it doesn't belong to me alone. It belongs to my students, who show up every day, show resilience and dedication and determination. It belongs to their Bearcat Buddies, who promote acceptance and inclusion within our school community. It belongs to my paraprofessionals, Abby Van Omen and Thomas Nancy, who support our students tirelessly every single day. It also belongs to my administrators. They put up with our shenanigans way too much. I mean, Mr. Van Omen getting pied in the face to raise money for us. Dr. Jones willingly goes in for a fist bump every day, knowing he's gonna get snailed. It's the little things from them that just mean so much to us. It goes to the parents of our students. Without them, we would not have this opportunity to even be where we are. And this award also serves as a reminder to our community. Students with disabilities deserve not only recognition, but also resources and opportunities equal to their peers. When we provide them, we empower students with disabilities to reach their full potential and lift our community. So tonight, I thank you all for the support you have shown me and my students, and all students in Lexington receiving special services. I also challenge us together to continue building and being a district that leads in inclusion and special education. Change begins with us. Thank you.
Mr. Van Omen, did you have a guest to sneak in?
Nigel is here.
Nigel, give us a wave, Nigel. Mrs. Rucker read your bio, so I wanted to at least recognize you and thank you for your representing of B C High School. Next, I would like to invite Mary Brooks, our Director of Parenting and Early Childhood Education, to talk to us about two recognitions. One, another national award for one of our parent educators, and the other, a state distinction. So, Mrs. Brooks.
All right, I'm tall, so I've got to adjust. Hopefully, maybe. All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board and Dr. Hafner. I am thrilled to be able to stand in front of you tonight and share some wonderful, exciting information about our Lexington Two Star Family Partnership Program. This is the program that is funded partially through Lexington Two District and partially through First Steps, Lexington County First Steps. And in the past few years, our Star Family Partnership has had three parent educators that have been recognized at the national level as National Parent Educators of the Year by the Parents' Teachers Association, which I feel like speaks volumes about our commitment to excellence with our program, serving our families before our students even enter our schools. In two thousand and nineteen, Paola Adams was the first to earn this honor for Lexington Two. She now serves as an interpreter for the district. You may have heard of her or from her. And then in two thousand and twenty-three, Lydia Mayo was selected as a National Parent Educator of the Year. And this year, in two thousand and twenty-five, Ms. Rosa Contreras is our National Parent Educator of the Year. And as a teen mom, Rosa received support through a Parents' Teachers Program with the oldest of her five children. As she had additional children, she got additional parent educators. And so she went on to have multiple parent educators work with her and her family over the years. She jokes, we joke, that she's had lots of different role models and models, because now she's giving back. And so Rosa is the perfect representation of the power of this Parents' Teachers parenting program. She has a few words she'd like to share with you, so I'm gonna step aside.
Thank you, Mary, for the introduction. Good evening, everyone. I would like to share with you a letter that I wrote to my parent educator. It says, "Dear Maria, I hope this letter finds you well. I want to take a moment to thank you for everything you have done for me as a parent educator. Your support and guidance have helped me to reach where I am today. I'm receiving this Parent Educator of the Year award, proves that I have learned from the best, you. When I didn't believe in myself, you always helped me overcome my fears. By believing in me, you have supported me through this journey and all these years. I often tell others that you are my role model in this job. Professional, yet loving and caring like a mother. You truly make a difference in my life and in the community. You have genuinely redirected my life and the lives of my children. Thanks to you, I have a first-generation college student, Anthony. And Aiden is a high school senior, cut-willing, graduating with an associate degree. The three younger ones are in Spanish immersion to preserve our mother language, just like you taught me. I became a U.S. citizen on May twenty-third at nine a.m. in Charleston. And by noon, I had to leave because Anthony was graduating from high school with honors. It was quite an adventure." She really taught me the importance of resilience and to always concentrate on the good. I have always admired you for being there, visiting weekly, and bringing books for the children. Back then, you were my only connection to the outside world since I was new to Lexington. You shared parks and community resources with me. Truly, the good children I have today are a direct result of the teachings about attachment and social interactions you helped me develop. Thank you for recommending that I become an early care educator and work with the school. That opened the door for me to receive extensive professional development and eventually become a parent educator three years ago. Through Parents' Teachers, my goal has always been to meet families where they are and walk alongside them, helping to build a strong foundation for lifelong learning and connection. Because of this, are, because these are moms like me, who need a lot of guidance and are sometimes new to the country. I believe a great deal to my parent educator, and I want to share this award with her because her success, my success, is in many ways her successes. I sincerely, Rosa. That was a letter that I wrote to her a week ago, and she was very emotional about it. She said to throw me back. With this being said, I believe we all have heroes who help us get where we are. I want to sincerely thank Sheri and Mary for nominating me for this award. And I'm so deeply grateful to Lexington District Two for giving me the opportunity to be a champion for our families. Thank you.
I think it's apparent that she is the Parent Educator of the Year. And also, Aiden and Bella are here, so I want them to stand up and see. There's two of her children that came out to support her tonight. Then also in the back, we have Amelda and Sheri, part of our Star Family Partnership. These ladies work diligently with our families, visiting in the homes. And as she said, often are their connection to the outside world. So that's an exciting, it's an exciting program, and it is, I call it, an award-winning program. And speaking of award-winning programs, hot off the press while I have the microphone, so I want to also share with you that our Lexington Two Preschool Inclusion Team was recently notified that we have been, we are the recipient of an award called the Growing Strong District Distinction Award. This is an award that's being given by the South Carolina Partnerships for Inclusion. The Lexington Two Preschool Inclusion Team includes myself, Sheri, who is our lead parent educator, Felicia Madden, our Coordinator of Elementary Special Services, Dr. Lisa Hay Adams, our preschool psychologist, Beth Montgomery, a lead speech-language pathologist, Ms. Kimberly Scalise, our District Teacher of the Year, who's a preschool itinerant teacher, and Jan Scarborough, who's our District Family Services Coordinator. We work collectively to increase inclusive opportunities for preschool students. We have many preschool students coming through that have some identified needs for support. And so we are a part of a team that works collaboratively with members of our community, and we work to provide creative opportunities, I guess, to help those children get their needs met. I want to read to you what the South Carolina Partnerships for Inclusion sent to us after our nomination. It says, "Your nomination demonstrated a longstanding commitment to building strong foundations to improve outcomes for young children and families, anchored by your preschool inclusion team's leadership since 2016. We were especially impressed with the impact of your itinerant teaching model, expanding access and meaningful participation for preschool students with disabilities in your community. Your bilingual parent educators, such as Rosa and Amelda, home visitation supports, and inclusive playgroups reflect a deep commitment to intentional family engagement. The evidence of growth through community-wide professional development events and strong partnerships with childcare providers shows the systemic and sustainable impact of your work. Your district exemplifies what it means to be growing strong, building systems to support inclusive, high-quality, early-learning environments for all young children and families." And I just want to take this opportunity to tell you that I work with teams of people, and we do that on a daily basis. That is our goal. So thank you for the time, and we appreciate your support and the support of the entire Lexington School District Two.
Finally, tonight, I'd like to invite up New Bridge Academy Director Kelly Remia to tell us about a recognition one of their educators received from the Palmetto State Teachers Association.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, board, and Dr. Hafner. I am here tonight to have the opportunity to recognize Dr. David Goff. Dr. Goff is an English teacher at New Bridge Academy, and he's also a probably familiar face to you as he just ended his tenure as the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five District Teacher of the Year. But tonight, I'm here to recognize him for being selected to the Palmetto State Teachers Association's Star Teacher Fall Seminar cohort. This is a program that recognizes outstanding veteran educators. And twice a year, the P S T A, in partnership with the Foundation for Professional Development, hosts a group of educators and of leaders, teacher leaders, from around South Carolina, who, for a week-long seminar on the beautiful island of, Seabrook Island. During this time, that he, the teachers participate in a book study, okay? He will also have the opportunity to take a beach walk, which is led by a naturalist, tour historical Charleston, okay, and enjoy some time to reflect, okay, and rejuvenate. The best part about all of this is that it is all paid for him, including the sub that we will have for him by the foundation. So we are very excited that, for him to be recognized this as he is an amazing educator, and I'm super proud to have him in my building, working with his children here in Lexington Two.
That is all, Mr. Chair.
All right. Now, we're gonna move into public participation. I think we only have one. Is that correct, Dawn? Is she in here? I think it's just one. All right. And you know the routine. You got five minutes. You got it. Take off. This is Melissa.
All right. Good evening. Can't say enough about the four K services in our district, by the way. Both my children went through Riverbank. It was amazing. So thank you for that. Tonight, I am on my seat box as a Lex Two parent. I do my best to sit through every school board meeting. And the more I sit through these this year, it is very clear elections have consequences, and that's beyond evident when I come to these meetings. Last month, one of our new Lex Two board members, Mary Burkett, spoke on a policy revision for field trip chaperones. I was rather shocked at the comments, simply in light of this district's recent transportation issues that, from what I understand, are pretty ongoing. Burkett said, "We're talking about doing a background check on every mom that gets on a bus with the third graders to go wherever." Is that correct? Do we have that money allotted somewhere? It sounds like potentially that could be a lot of people. You have a lot of different moms and people who go on things. I mean, are we gonna have to do thirty different moms at school, et cetera? Superintendent Brenda Hafner asserted that the money wasn't the budget, but also said typically these costs are incorporated into school activity funds. That's something we feel is necessary to be with our children while they're away from the building. And, you know, as a parent, as a Cub Scout participant, the idea that one of our board members doesn't see the need for background checks when our children leave the building is rather infuriating. And those comments led me to believe that she wasn't aware that Lex Two already requires these background checks for chaperones. Another situation that demonstrates she'll vote on changes to a policy without actually understanding the current policy in place. Until the two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-five school year, parents that were interested in being chaperones absorbed that twenty-five-dollar cost of a background check I do every year. Last year, I was actually pleasantly surprised when the district started to absorb that cost for parents. It is helpful. Then all you have to do is pass the background check. Now, Ms. Burkett was sworn in as a Lex Two board member on November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, and at her first regular meeting on November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, she, along with the rest of you, voted to approve five point three million dollars in additional C P I F funds, one point four million for stadium turf. You've heard me talk about that before, earlier than the planned timeframe of the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, and outside of the superintendent's annual C P I F budget presentation. I said the rest of you. It was actually a six-to-one vote. For once, Mr. Bray and I agreed. I apologize for that oversight. Burkett said, "As a new board member, I am Mr. Aller, being asked to vote on five point three million dollars, and I would have appreciated having the information you just gave us prior to tonight. It would have been really helpful, instead of just having these numbers on here, for you to give us that information ahead of time. I haven't had the opportunity to see any kind of long-term capital improvement plan, so I don't know what we have planned in that regard. If we could possibly, possibly receive that on some regular basis, so that I, I feel like I'm sort of swimming around in the dark here. Fellow board members, I mean, I have to bow to your greater wisdom about this. If you feel it's a good idea, I'm willing to vote for this tonight, but I'm not willing to vote for it in the future if I just don't have any information." It was pushed through anyway. Trey Bray was the sole nay vote. Even a broken clock is right twice a day. But five months later, on April seventeenth, a thirteen-year-old eighth-grade student from Lexington Two passed away in a tragic accident on ice coming back from a field trip. Once it was reported, the Lex Two Board of Trustees' statement to W I S said, "Lexington Two will not offer further comment on these records or the April seventeenth incident due to the ongoing investigation." The previous evening, on April sixteenth, Ms. Burkett was again confused about our school and district.
Can I get you to please not use names during your presentation?
Can I have my time back? And she's a board member. Can I not use a board member's name?
But you can't use names during your presentation.
Okay. So when I went to a FOIA panel last week at the State Museum, I spoke about some of the Lex Two board policies, including policy B E D I, which states that the board chairman will be the official spokesperson for the board. That's extremely uncomfortable, especially looking at your campaign contributions before your amendment, of course, Mr. Key. Also, I spoke with Taylor Smith of the South Carolina Press Association about this policy. She said, "I can't think of any more grave failure by a school board member or any elected official of not doing the things you're elected to do in the most transparent manner possible. I have submitted a FOIA for more information about the chaperones and would appreciate that in a timely manner at no cost." B E D B board agenda, last month, it was suggested that was Burkett's revision. That was written on the agenda. And perhaps this was voted, perhaps board members missed that this was voted down last year. What is wrong with the majority of the board agreeing that something goes on the agenda? Why should one member dictate that? And finally, while I was speaking with FOIA, I talked a little bit about the release of information as far as the PACE for Lex Two group. Time. I'll save it for next one. Thank you so much for your time.
All right. We're gonna move on into divisional reports, and we're gonna move into finance. And as you can tell, Ms. Kai Strickland is not here tonight, so we're gonna throw Ms. Rose Anderson right into the fire. Come on up.
Thank you for that. Good evening, Dr. Hafner, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. I'm Rose Anderson, the Director of Finance, representing the Finance Department this evening. The Lexington Two School District's August financials and other documents were uploaded to the Diligent platform for your review. Are there any questions on the information that was submitted?
Great job. Yeah, one question, but it's not for you. Mr. Warren, we still have the pack on here. What's our anticipated date to finish, close that out? That's all I have.
We're getting very close. We did make some good headway here in the last few months, addressing some issues that we've been working through with our contractors. So need to keep that project open, this project open, to make sure we could get those taken care of. But we are fast approaching that. I feel better about it now than ever that we can close this thing out very soon.
Any others?
Thank you.
Thank you. With that objection, the monthly financial reports stands accepted as presented. And now we're gonna move into human resources and turn it over to Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll call up Director of Human Resources, Stephanie Hux, to give our regular vacancy report.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members. Dr. Hafner comes to you with some good news. We have two regular ed vacancies, one special ed vacancy, and five support vacancies for this month. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Hux. That concludes our report. Thank you.
All right. Now, we'll move into instruction.
If you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'd love to just say a word real quick. I know we've got some lengthy information that Dr. McDonald is going to provide, but I am happy to report that we've made some significant gains in several of our core subject areas, but specifically in our two underperforming schools, which I know you've seen that data. And among the gains, our elementary, middle school students saw nearly a two, double digits, excuse me, average increase across all grade levels in S C rated for E L A. And then we saw some improvements and gains in math in grades three, four, five, and eight. But we know we still have, still have plenty of work to do there. And our high school saw an average increase in algebra, English Two, and U.S. history at approximately four to five percent. So every little bit is a positive, but we, again, we know we still have work to do. But one substantial point- But one substantial point that Dr. McDonald will speak to briefly is a 500% gain in access, which is the annual English language proficiency test for identified K-12 English language learners. So these results have been released by the State Department, so Dr. McDonald's going to expound upon those, but we won't have official report card ratings until mid-October. And then we'll talk about it again in October. Dr. McDonald.
Thank you, Dr. Hafner, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're happy tonight to share with you some performance data. We're gonna talk some numbers tonight, so I will, we'll forewarn you. We may get a lot of, a lot of information, but we'll try our best to be concise. First up, this evening, we are required, as you all recall, per state Board of Education policy, that we report to you four times per year on our underperforming schools. And in our district, we have four of those that are, that are, have either been a below-average or unsatisfactory school for the, for this year. Casey Elementary, Wood Elementary, Airport High School, and Brooklyn Casey High School are those four underperforming schools. And we provided for you tonight a presentation with those updates. And I will, will not go slide-by-slide tonight because much of the quantitative data I'm gonna share in the next presentation, but I did want you to have that update and to answer any questions that you might have. We have representatives from the schools here as well to answer any questions that you might have from this underperforming schools quarterly update. We'll have one more update prior to the state identifying the next list of underperforming schools, which we should know that information shortly after the school report card is released in mid-October. And then we'll be starting to begin, we'll begin this entire process again and have one more report on this year's schools. So it'll, we'll try to keep that as clear as we can as we start to go through that. But we're happy to report good progress there. And you can see from the presentation, a lot of examples from these schools. Okay? It's okay. We'll move to the next presentation, which tonight will be to look at our state assessment data. As you all recall, the data that we're gonna share with you this evening has been released by the State Department of Education. That was done on September the 2nd for public use. And those, those data results have been shared pretty widely. There's been a lot of success across the state, particularly in the area of language arts. And we will be no different from that success in our district this year, and I'll share that a little bit more thoroughly shortly. But did wanna hit on that. It's sort of an abnormal year. There was a large spike in ELA performance across the state. And that's a good thing. That means that lots of things that we're working on are working. We certainly are trying to pick that apart and look a little deeper at how we might capitalize on that and hopefully get us to maybe even further in the year to come. Also tonight, just as a reminder, sometimes this gets confusing. We're, we're gonna talk about data for all of our kids that were tested in the spring testing season. So this will look at every kid that's tested. However, not all of those kids count for accountability purposes, which will be reflected on the school report card. So oftentimes, people say, "Why don't these two sets of numbers match?" And it's because it's for two different purposes. One is to report who tested, how they did. The other one's, of course, to meet those accountability standards for the Federal Department of Education, as well as the State Department of Education. And so we'll, we'll talk about those next month. But just to give you an idea, our goal as a district is to meet the requirement of the 2030 goal, which has been set by the Department of Education. And that goal is that at least 75% of our students will perform at or above grade level across the state. And so the secondary piece of that is that every student will also graduate college, career, college-ready, career-ready, or military-ready when they leave our schools. And so we'll talk about the results of those testing programs tonight. Before I jump into those, I do wanna just make a comment about SC Ready and our end-of-course test programs as a state. South Carolina has historically been ranked as one of the most rigorous testing programs in the country. Our tests put against other states are pretty tough. In fact, at your place tonight, you have some sample questions for you to do for homework this evening. So we hope you'll, you'll enjoy working on, on different testing assignments that our kids actually saw over the years. These are real items that have been released by the State Department for us to use to help make sure our kids are on track. So we've given you some of those to look at. We also just wanna make sure that we, we speak to some other information that we see a lot of times, is how do we compare nationally? So what does South Carolina do nationally? And so the assessment program for, for determining national rankings is called NAEP. And NAEP is given annually to select schools. It's not given to every kid in this state. It's not given at every school in this state. And so those results come out usually in January. And South Carolina has actually defied the odds for a couple of years now in performance increasing as a state, whereas most states are seeing declines over the last couple of years. So we see some really good movement, and we think that's, that's something that's sort of showing up in, in our local data as we start to pick that out. The challenge of the NAEP assessment is that we will never know how our kids on Lex Two perform, because that data is never shared with us. We only get state-level data when we're looking at those national assessments. For SC Ready, SC Ready is, of course, given to kids in grades three through eight, and they must take a test in ELA, writing, math, science, and only science at either grades four or six, not both. So you can see I put in parentheses there for you, so you can see how many days it takes us to administer these state tests. For 2026, ELA will continue to be three days, math will now be two days, and they'll, of course, still take a one-day test in science at either fourth or sixth. But for our kid, for our kids, for our district to be on track towards that 2030 goal, we have to do all of those things. And most importantly, we have to make a score of meets or exceeds on that test. So when we look at these, these results tonight, you'll kind of see what that looks like. The first graphic that I wanna share with you is, is sort of a comparison to show you how we performed as a whole compared against the state. And you can see our English language arts scores. We have 40%, 47% of our students who are meets or exceeds this year compared to the state average of 60%. So we're still behind where we need to be, to be in line with the state average. In mathematics, we had 30% of our students who collectively were meets and exceeds and 40, compared to 44% of the state. And for science, this was a new test this year. So whole new standards, new assessment program. So there won't be an apples-to-apples comparison for, for another year. But science, we, our students performed at 36%. We're at that meets-and-exceeds mark compared to the state, which was 49%. You can see that reflected a little differently here in this next page, where we look at it against last year to kind of see where we are. And so you can see straight out that we're, we have seen some growth in our English language arts area. We saw some growth in our math area, which, across the state, has been a little slower than language arts. And then, of course, science, you won't see a comparison because we're not there yet. So first up tonight, I just wanna share with you what this looks like by grade level, just to, to kind of talk with you about how we performed. So we, we look at these data sets in several different ways. We wanna look at the grade level, because we wanna look, as a district, how do we perform at the third-grade level? That gives us a lot of indication about what we're doing in the early grades, how we're, how we're working with some of those basic reading skills, those basic math skills that a kid has to have to long-term be successful. And so we look really hard at where those are. And you can see here in third grade that we had, if you look at those, that last column is really what we're looking for, that level of success. And you can see each of our grade levels where they scored. Again, the state is scoring a 60% average across the state. That puts us in line with every other district, whether, whether they are already a higher-performing district or not. And you can see that as a, as a school district, where our individual grade levels have broken out for language arts. You can also see that similarly for... And it stopped working. Not clicking anymore. You'll just advance the slide for me. There we are. So you can see here how we perform with math. And you can see, we, we know that our third graders have done pretty well. They're, they're right in line with where we would expect them to be with the state average. Certainly, we want that number to be higher. And you can see where we take some dips. Typically speaking, middle school math does take some dips in terms of that overall number of students who are meeting that grade-level benchmark. And certainly, we wanna continue to increase that. And that happens for a lot of different reasons. We're, we're still seeing a lag, and that's a nationwide trend to see that lag in math score performance due to a lot of the, the challenges of 2019, 20. So we're still seeing the residuals of those marks across our schools in our district. And finally, science. This looks at our science, fourth and sixth grade, how we compare to the state average, where we are in both fourth grade and sixth grade. This gives you sort of an overall look over time, so that I wanted to make sure that you were able to kind of see what we look like in terms of performance over, over several years. And here you have six years' worth of data to compare to. And you can see that same information by grade level, where we are. So you can see, up from last year in language arts, we, we have grown by, by 9.19% from one year to the next. And you can see some grade levels have much higher growth than others. And you can certainly look back, if you go all the way back to 2019, so before we even knew what COVID was, this is where our district was. This is where our kids were scoring. And so you can see, we've actually made some pretty considerable progress even over 2019. So if you take out all of the, the challenges we've had over the last few years, we're actually still moving in the right direction. Certainly want that to be expedited, but we're, we'll take these gains and we'll continue to capitalize on those. Same thing for math. This gives you a look of where we are with math. We had two grade levels that, that, that did not show that improvement that we expected to see. Our third, fourth, seventh, and eighth-grade students all showed positive growth from, from last year to this year, as well as getting closer and closer to where we need to be, to be in line with the state expectations. But certainly, we are a long ways away from that 2030 goal. And science as well. This, although not an apples-to-apples, you can see here what we were looking like in regard to science from way back in 2019 all the way to the present. Now, the next way we look at this is by school. We wanna make sure that we're looking school to school, how we're performing and what those resources have looked like from one school to the next, how we're utilizing different tools, how we're, how we're helping our schools to, to grow and to be more successful. You can see here in language arts that, at the elementary level, all of our elementary schools made great gains in the area of language arts. So we know that some of the work we've been doing with literacy, we know that some of the, the clear focus that we've put in some of our lesson planning and other things are really beginning to take hold, and we believe that will continue. We've also, again, you can see how we compare to both the districts. So when we look at our district average, that does include grades three through eight, because we, we, we use that average for all of our SC Ready assessments. And then you can see how we compare to the state. Our middle schools, similarly, showed all improvement. So we're very proud that all of our schools, all of our elementary and middle schools showed improvement in the area of language arts this year, ranging from, from as high as 13% all the way down to three, but all of them showed improvement in language arts, and we're very pleased with that performance. Our math shows a little different story. Again, not quite the growth that we wanted, but also in line, if you look, the, the state saw 1.76% growth this year in math. Our district saw a 1.49%. So we weren't far off from where the state growth measure looked like. So when you take us compared to all the rest of the districts, we're, we're pretty much in line. Now, we still have a long ways to go with math. And if you look, we had one school that did, or two schools that did go backwards in math. And we're continuing to work with those schools to put plans in place to, to, to really look at how we can move that the opposite direction and how we're going to support teachers to ensure our kids are getting what they need. And then also our middle schools. Three of our four middle schools made progress and showed gains in the area of math, and those range in difference from, from 0.4 all the way up to 3.06% growth. We also look at science for fourth grade. And again, it's the first year for this assessment, so there's nothing really to compare it to yet. But you can see here that we had at least one school that scored above this, at or above the state average. And in sixth grade, we still considerably lagged behind that state average, and that will be one of our critical work areas for this year. So what are some things that we're doing to help improve these results? I wanna make sure that we, we share with you some of the things that we're doing to challenge these results, but also to make sure that we're continuing to keep that laser focus on those key critical areas to help our schools be successful. First and foremost, as you all remember, we launched a new learning framework last year to help all of our language across our division and across our schools to be similar, to make sure that we've got strong processes in place to, to guide the work that our teachers are doing with students. We have, of course, been working very hard at our letters training for our early grades to ensure our teachers have access to really science-based methods to, to teach reading. We launched a brand-new ELA curriculum last year that had a lot of great supports that were not available to teachers before. That has been in place now. This is our second year with that. This summer, we have revised all of our curriculum to really refocus it back to really critical basic pieces for our teachers to use, but also to ensure that we include more supports and resources for teachers in the area of, of supporting our ML kids, as well as our students with disabilities specifically. We wanted to make sure our teachers don't have to go find things, that they don't have to spend their time looking for it. We can put it in there for them to be able to access it easily. We've also launched this year a retraining of our reading and instructional coaches. So those folks that are supporting teachers in the building, we're spending a considerable amount of time working with them to be stronger and also making sure that they're able to support our teachers' needs. We are, we launched our, our district problem-solving team that continues to help schools think through some of those critical challenges they have and how we might be able to pull our resources together to, to help those. All of our schools are, are working on student goal-setting. We're gonna get those numbers to move, because our kids are gonna begin to understand how important it is for their own performance to move. They understand a video game. They know what happens when they get a better score. We want them to think like that when it comes to math. How do I get my math score to be better every year? And also this year, we're doing a considerable amount of work on revisiting our MTSS and intervention process and making sure that those are all aligned with rigor and high-quality assessments throughout what our kids are experiencing. So if I might, I, I don't mind stopping here. I can continue to the high schools if you, if you wanna hold your questions, or I can answer any questions you may have about SC Ready.
I'll say we have to do the high schools and then stop there.
Perfect, perfect, perfect. Okay. For our SC Ready, for our SC end-of-course exam program, or EOC, not do it right, CEP, too many letters tonight, we'll, we'll talk with you about our high schools. And of course, when we're looking at this, our, our goal to be on that 2030 goal is that students must earn a C or better on that EOC exam. Those tests are given in grades eight through 12 last year. Now they will only be given at nine through 12, but they're given in classes of Algebra I, English II, Biology I, and U.S. History Constitution. So students are gonna take all four of those. Some of the data tonight you'll see is from middle school, because we did give Algebra I in middle school. So that, we'll look at it from two lenses, from our high schools and from our elementary, or from our middle schools. So this gives you an idea. This, this shows you where we are with Algebra I across our district, with all the schools that, that give that exam. We wanted to make sure that you had a historical look at that as well. So you can see here, we go all the way back to 2019, and we look at our success, and we look at our movement, and we look at, at declines. We see a number of different pieces of data here that are very important. I would encourage you to look very closely at that district number at the bottom, as well as the state, to look at how that has either increased or declined and where we are in comparison to that. This year, we're, we're pleased to see a 5% growth in, in Algebra I, getting more and more kids to that C mark. While that may seem difficult, when we talk about a highly rigorous test, it is, it is difficult for many of our students, particularly those that may lack those foundational math skills, to be highly successful on that test. English II was a new test in 2022. Prior to that, it was assessed in English I. And so you can see here, there are now four years' worth of data to help us understand what our students are doing. And we are seeing that growth return in the area of English II. And so this year, we, we had the, the most growth of the two schools at, at Brooklyn Casey. And of course, Airport also showed positive growth. So we're very pleased to, to continue to make that movement. And you can also see here that we actually, we outgrew the state growth in this particular area. Biology I continues to be a challenge. It's not just a challenge for us. You can see the state average, when you look at it, it is well below 50%. It continues to be a challenge statewide, but certainly for us, continues to be one of our areas that still needs additional support and work. And you can see our performance here over history. And both of our schools did see a decline in Biology I this year. With U.S. History and Constitution, Airport High School had an 11% growth from, from last year to this year, which, of course, was a higher growth than the state. And you can see where we are in comparison to, to our state and, as well as looking at what we've done kind of over time in that course. So what are we doing to, to support the growth in our EOC classes? First off, again, we talk about launching that framework. It's been critical to, to helping our teachers understand what are those basic pieces of[1776.53] It's been critical to helping our teachers understand what are those basic pieces of planning, as well as what are those essential elements of a good quality lesson. We launched new English curriculum for our high schools last year as well, and have now revised that again for this year, as well as launching our instructional blueprints. So those two also include that those same supports for our high school teachers that we put in place for our elementary and middle school teachers. We launched a new benchmark assessment program last year for us to be able to know faster where our kids may be, but also to be able to acknowledge those things that our kids already know before they even arrive in those high school credit classes. We've been providing much more structured, focused, professional development for these four areas. We know that these teachers are going to need more focused support on things such as assessment, on developing high-quality access to materials, and so we've been working to provide that. We are conducting monthly data reviews with our high schools to look at what they're doing, to look at what impact it's having, to make sure that we're monitoring where they are growing or where they may still need to see additional work. We also have implemented our Panorama, our grad-tracking software, to help us really be on top of who's making that progress, who is not, looking at the, of course, creative pathways and more flexible learning opportunities for our students to be able to get or to make up for credits that they may not have earned. And again, these schools also participate in our quarterly problem-solving team work, where we're looking at what they're doing and how they're growing. I do want to mention one piece that I think is not showing in this slide, and that is, of course, the access data that Dr. Hafner spoke to earlier. As a district, just to give you an idea, that data is available, and we can get you the slide for that. Our district saw a really strong growth in the assessment that students take each year, all of our ML students take to, it's not showing up on the presentation unfortunately, but if you have it, great. We're able to chart these kids' progress, they take this assessment in multiple parts, and so our district did see a giant gain in the area of just that one assessment alone. We spent a considerable amount of time, every school last year, we trained teachers again on what to look for, how that test is presented, things they could do in their classroom to help kids prepare for that. It's a very tough test. Kids have to record themselves speaking. Most elementary, middle, and high school students, they will talk loudly everywhere but when it comes to an assessment. And so we've seen historically that's been a challenge for our students, but we've asked teachers to start practicing that more in their classroom, giving all students the opportunity to speak more. And so we're very pleased to see almost 140 kids who are able to meet that benchmark requirement of proficient on the access test compared to a much lower number last year and a much lower number for the last several years. So we're very pleased with that progress. So that, those are the numbers. Again, that's a lot of information and a lot of data, but I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Ms. Bray?
On the access, thank you. Great presentation, and there's some awesome stuff in there. On the access for proficiency, is that a four on the one through five, or is that out of, they've tested out of it?
These students who perform, who become proficient have tested out of the program once they hit those requirements, yes.
Gotcha.
They're out of service, direct services, they're monitored for four.
They're not one through five anymore. They're, now they're just monitored.
Four, and then they need to monitor.
Gotcha, thank you. Like I said, there's a lot of good stuff in there. I would be remiss, you know, we can't go pull out everything, but kudos to Casey. Plus 14, plus seven, and then the plus seven all by itself, so that's fantastic. Obviously, there's plenty of stuff to improve, and we're on track for that. I would be interested to know, I looked at some of the other district results and the state's results for ELA, and this, you know, I'm going to lose a little humility here, but I would love to know what cell phones being out of classrooms did to ELA, because I've never seen a jump as much as I've watched it across the state. And now we take a device out of a kid's hand. That leads me to the next point that we brought up a while back. I wonder if we start taking more electronics out of little kids' hands and putting paper back in their hands, if we continue to see that increase. Something to think about, y'all are the experts, but I tried to find some whys that differentiated ELA from math across the whole state. Like, you know, it just is, it is an anomaly that one just jumped so much higher when you look back for years and years, and there's nothing else I could find to it. Until the results come out across the board, do we have GT growth at all? I know last year we had, you know, probably one of the best in the state. How'd we do this year?
So those numbers, we're still crunching. So there's still a lot of that work to be done with looking at the different subgroups and all of that. So those are things that we'll be doing and working with our schools, because we want to make sure that, A, we celebrate that, but B, we also want to make sure that we can keep that moving.
Absolutely, yeah.
There'll be more work with that.
I mean, obviously, it'll probably level out some, but if we can keep, stay on top of the wave. Next is, I don't understand, I went to Lexington two, and I feel like I should know this, but if I look at district-state comparisons and we look at ELA, it says that our district is 47%. But if I look at three through eight, our average is like 59 and a half percent.
Great question.
And then I look at English II, and we're at 61%. So our district average is way below the two numbers that I see here, two average. Help me understand how that works.
So the average is, it's very complicated. Let's see if I can do this. Rob, Dr. Berger, I'll jump in if I've missed explained this. So to get that average for SC Ready, it takes all grade levels. So three through eight are averaged, not together, but averaged by the percent of students who have scored meets and exceeds at each grade level. So it is a complicated formula that we use to go back and figure that percentage out. So yes, it will not average the way that you would think it would average. You have to pull the average from the number who are meets and exceeds for each grade level for each year and the number of students who tested in that particular area.
Yeah, that sounds exciting. I guess my question is, is how do we figure out, like, obviously, in ELA, 59.6 is awesome. English II, 61, we're moving up. But I want that 47 to keep doing that. Is maybe in a workshop, can we get in, can we like really geek out and see the individual levers that we need to pull here? Just nothing more than my edification. Like, it intrigues me to not be able to get to a math answer.
So if that's the wish, we can certainly help you with those data points. What we look at a lot is, is how do we grow those individual subgroups to grow that, to grow that average number? We know that every time the average number grows, we've grown significantly, so we want to continue to do that.
The only other thing I have in then right there is, I think it would be fantastic in a room of educators if we could work on getting this data into some type of dashboard so that we can, you know, let's get it out there and let it be seen and touched and felt and tinkered like we would in any other agency. That is all. Thank you, great work.
Thank you.
I was just going to say it would help me share the average. I'd like to see the number of kids on this chart.
We have that.
Ms. Burkett?
A couple things. In the high, in the high school, like for instance, with the percentage of kids that are passing Algebra I, that are getting a C or higher, what happens to the kids that aren't doing that? Do they take Algebra I over?
So typically, they would not necessarily take it over unless they have failed. Remember, this is just the test portion. So this exam counts 20% of their grade, of their final average. So a kid could, in theory, have a much higher average and fail this test and still get credit for a course. It's rare. I mean, it's not as, it's not as normal, but typically, we would want to see if a kid can make that C or better, that they also get a grade of C or better. But we know that sometimes grades don't always reflect that the way that it should. And so it doesn't necessarily mean that they fail because they get that D or F on this. It just means that they're not, they're not technically making enough progress per the test. So again, they may very well get all those four credits but fail all four of these tests. That is possible.
That's really disheartening to me, because the whole point is to educate the individual child to be able to go on and do something in their adult life. And I just disagree with us parsing the numbers so that things don't look so dire. In regard to the elementary and the middle schools, I just want to congratulate you principals and your teachers, because these numbers in English, English Language Arts are just fantastic. So just kudos to you, because I know how much work went into that, and I'm super proud of you. I am, I continue to be concerned about these math scores, simply because, you know, in some of our schools, two of our middle schools, 17% of the students are meets or exceeds. That's, that's not even two out of 10 children that are able to do the math on grade level. Well, just think about that a minute. I, to me, that's an emergency. That's not, let's just try something new next year and kind of see what happens. And we're trying something new this year. We've already talked about that. But that is, to me, that's a crying shame. We're preparing kids for a future, and if they can't do middle school math, only, less than two out of 10 of them can do it, well, where are the engineers going to come from? Where are the pharmacists going to come from? Where are the doctors going to come from? We're taking away those opportunities from them when they're 12 years old. And so I just would like to see us, and it is a national problem, I understand that, we're not alone in this, it's a statewide problem, but that doesn't mean that our individual kids don't matter. So I would like to see us consider it a true emergency and say, what can we do to change this? And I mean, we did that in English Language Arts. I mean, last year, we said this, that the numbers are terrible, let's do something about it. And so we have to figure out, how can we get that same kind of result going in terms of math?
Ms. Burkett, I will say to you, it is as much of a fore-alarm fire as it can be for us. We, in fact, I think I had two different meetings today about math alone. So every day, we're working and putting things in place. Our team has been out working with our schools to change the, to change this narrative. We've got to keep our foot on the gas, to your point about the language arts. You know, we know that there was a change in standards. Anytime there's a change in standards, we're going to see it impact, you're going to see an impact one side or the other when it comes to this. Math changed this year, standards have changed for this year. So it could be that in a year, we come back and say, look, we didn't get any growth. We went down. But we wanted to say, yes, we made some growth. We had some gains because we're in a new, because we have new standards, we have new systems in place. So those things are constantly changing, and we're constantly looking at, how do we move that number? So yes, it is absolutely a top priority for us. None of us are happy or satisfied with where we are. We know we need to perform better because we want our kids to be more successful.
Well, you know, I know that, and I appreciate that, but when you look at the five-year data, I mean, we're basically kind of hanging around the same place. Maybe three out of every 10 students are successful on grade level. Well, and yes, COVID happened, we all know that, but nonetheless, that's five years' worth of middle school students who went through middle school and into high school unable to probably accomplish the high school math. And so I just think individual kids matter. I just think that their lives matter, and we, we can't just say we're hoping next year something will look better, because you've got a whole crop of kids that this year matters. Is there any possibility of us having, you know, like, community mentors in math? I'm thinking about all the retired engineers and what have you that might be willing to come into the school and mentor an individual child, et cetera. I mean, could we think about doing things like that?
I don't think there's a school in this district that wouldn't welcome a community member or members or groups that would like to come and help do that critical work. We've been partnering in some, some of our, two of our middle schools right now, and one of our elementary schools have been fortunate to benefit from a large grant that we received from the State Department last year to provide high-dose tutoring. It's a very costly program, but we're using it. We were very fortunate. It was just over $200,000 that we were able to put in place in three schools. I don't think there is a school in this district that would deny folks who want to come work with kids on math or basic reading skills. We certainly would welcome that.
Do you think we could advertise that some way to the community? But, because I don't think people are aware that that would be a possibility. I think if you sort of put it out there and said, you know, we've got a crisis, and we need for people who can do some basic math to come to the middle school and help us. I mean, would that be possible?
I'm sure, I know our schools request that all the time, but I'm sure they could ask again.
Okay, thank you so much.
Ms. Burkett?
So, so as we were flipping through the slides, there was, you know, typically a school or two that really had a lot of growth. So could y'all please report to the board what we attribute that to in each category? Because I would like to know, you know, what's Casey doing, what's Northside doing, what's, you know, Airport, BC, you know, in the areas that they saw the most growth? Because I think that would be, I'm sure you all know, but it would be valuable for the board to know what we attribute that to, because if one school can grow typically, the others, you know, could too. So I would love to see that. And then we are early in the school year. Clearly, we have, you know, some work to do in math. I just wrote down math boost camps, like, let's get creative. Let's, you know, carve out a couple hours a week dedicated to, you know, math camps and, you know, do something fun, but also, you know, in a way that really, you know, maybe can help us make some gains this year in math. And to the ABC report that's, that we got, thank you again, super helpful. Course progress, MAP, it was 2020, no, it was 2025 Fall MAP was on there. It would be great since we did MAP last year, it would be amazing to have the comparison on here for 2024 MAP to fall to 2025, like compare where.
So we could do that. The challenge with that is it's really not an apples-to-apples. So it's, it's not even an apples-to, apples-to-lions. It's kind of a, it's two different things, because it's two totally different groups of kids, as well as even the numbers this year, because of the change in how the state calculates, MAP has also introduced a new calculation for how they project. So, so it's, yes, to your point, I think that would be great. You know, we provided you with the comparison of how our kids did on SC Ready versus how they did on the spring MAP, but it's harder to do that apples-to-apples projection. Now, when we get that mid-year data, we'll start to see the trend of where kids really are. So we'll be able to compare that fall to that winter. That's where that really sweet spot comes in of who's making progress, who's making enough progress to be on grade level or to be closer to their target goal by the end of the year, by that third administration. And, you know, we've spent a lot of time working with teachers on how to interpret those data points, but more importantly, to look at what kids still need. How do they build into their lesson planning what a kid still needs to be able to get there? That's our heart and soul, is to get them to that goal. And I think that belief piece really happened in language arts better than it maybe happened in math, but it certainly happened in math as well, that we set those goals for kids to really, to see how to move and how to make that growth.
Okay, so regarding that report, anything that we can easily show, are we making gains or not?
Certainly.
That's kind of the heart behind it, so, yeah. Thank you very much.
Ms. Cassis, you have a question?
You say math, and I start cringing, but I will have to say, again, I think this comes back to retaining, not just hiring, but retaining our great teachers. It will be interesting to see now that we're changing geometry in the eighth grade. I know two of my own kids needed some more maturing and thrived even more, whether they did, you know, as well in middle school. An amazing teacher is not just going to put slides up in math. An amazing teacher is going to recognize that you still need to hit all those modalities. Mary can probably look at those slides and get it like that. Liz needs manipulatives and to move around. And there's a young man out in that crowd, I shouldn't say young man, in the crowd now that is now a principal, that was phenomenal, because he knew and remembered each child is different and they learn a different way. But I think maybe having some maturity and doing some of these classes in high school, it'll be interesting to see if some of that changes, but thank you.
Ms. Burkett?
Yeah, I just want to say, when I was congratulating the middle schools and the elementary schools, I was looking at the SC Ready scores. So high schools, please don't feel that I was leaving you out of the kudos. You guys have done a great job as well. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Dr. McDonald?
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Thank you so very much. Very informative. We're going to move into operations now, and I'm going to turn to Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Dr. Hafner, provide, as you do every month, a CPIF update. You see before you, you know, once again, we continue to move on projects that you approved for this year, with the green ones being complete, yellow being in progress, and then that number of us to begin is shrinking by the month. So Mr. McPherson and his team continues to plow forward, also technology and transportation working on some of those items as well. So continue to make great progress with our CPF work for this year.
There we go. Thank you. I apologize for some of the, I've got four questions here. Typically diligent, I could go back and look back, but I feel slightly lost without the computer. Locker removal, what is $70,000 worth of locker removal? Is that painting? Is that cleaning up the walls?
Well, that's, first off, removing, you know, removing the lockers, demolition.
But we pay full-time equivalent folks. Did we pull, was there a contract with that?
No, that was contract work.
We contracted that out, okay.
To remove, and then also, when you do that work, you have to go back. And then also, when you do that work, you have to go back and repair the walls, drywall. In some cases, we had to go back and actually build a wall because of that separation that occurred when the lockers came out. So lots of, lots, lots of work goes into that number.
The next one, I apologize, I probably missed it last year. I just, I want it on record that I am not a big fan of buying brand-new vehicles over and over. You see that in every municipality around right now. The average person driving in our district has, you know, a seven-year-old vehicle. But if you go to every municipality, all of the just day-to-day driver cars are like brand-new Tahos and Escalade, not Escalades, but I just, that, that's not a great look. So let's make sure that we're, this is done, and I, it's silly for me to even kind of bring it up. But as we look at CPIF for next year, for regular daily driver vehicles, I, I would think we could probably go a few years without having many of those pop up there. And then if you go to the white section, the last slide, I guess, depending on how it shows up, the paving for district, where is that? At 50K? Me 500K?
I know we're looking at doing some work at Brooklyn Casey in their, in their parking lots. Really just trying to do a little bit of that bit by bit. You know, you, you can spend a lot of money on asphalt milling and resurfacing, but I know that's a focus for us initially, is at Brooklyn Casey.
So it's just, I mean, presumably not half a million dollars of paving at B.C.? I mean, I can't think of half a million dollars worth of.
No, no, that's.
Square footage there, and it says district.
District. I know, well, B.C.'s where our focus is. And outside of B.C., I know we're just, we looked at some other facilities as well.
Airport High School.
Airport High School as well. And so, you know, that, that money doesn't go very far when you look at the milling and the paving and the striping and all that goes into, you know, resurfacing a parking lot. So I know those are our two priorities right now.
Gotcha. If maybe on the next one, now that it's coming up, we can start breaking that down by at least the, the site instead of just half a million dollars sitting in one kind of fund without it being broken down.
Start that work.
Is definitely something that's going to be questioned. And then, and maybe we can hit this in offline, but property acquisition. I, I don't remember that at all, that last line item. Maybe, maybe it does, I'm getting older, but I, I don't remember that. Is that something that we've had on here?
Yes. Miss McDonald, since, since the start. Yes, sir.
Touche. Thank you, sir.
Yep. Ms. Rucker?
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to mention about the, our children's school devices that we issue. I just want to make sure we have the highest security possible on those devices. We just haven't gotten an update, I don't feel like, in a while about the devices. I just want to make sure. I'm sure we are staying on top of it, but I would just like to know a little more about that.
We can definitely make that a, a point of discussion in our next meeting. Absolutely.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Ms. Castles, you have a question?
I love that we have been having mock hearing trials to get people ready for that. I think that will be very beneficial. And I meant to ask this the last time, but what, do you know what we're lacking for the, the B.C. athletic medical card? Is it just like one or two things? But what are we lacking to have that complete for the year?
Yeah, it just hasn't come in yet. Just hasn't come in yet. But it's, it's been purchased. It's a replacement for what they currently have.
Right.
For the trainers to use and carry equipment around. But it hasn't, hasn't arrived yet. It'll be. Oh, it has arrived? Okay. We, we need to change that one. So that has arrived.
Ms. Roll?
I just had one thing. I know we, we were doing a lot of the, the drills and stuff, and I applaud the district for going through that. But I have at least heard in one of the schools that the Wi-Fi or the, you know, the access to their phone for their alarms, you know, was, was spotty. So, so maybe I can talk to you offline about it.
Sure, sure.
I don't know if you have, if that's in the operating budget when you, or a computer budget or something like that.
You mean in terms of.
Having Wi-Fi communication, yeah.
Okay, okay. I know schools are always a challenge, you know, any buildings with, you know, with cellphone, you know, communication with your, you know, block walls and masonry walls. But we can look at that and see what kind of issues we're having.
But if, if it's part of the drill, the emergency lockdown drills, I think it's very important to make sure.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can talk more about it and look into that.
One thing I forgot to mention is the, and I apologize, but the tip line was mentioned in your first report. And I think we have seen it successfully used multiple times this year. And so like, this is my PSA for, on behalf of all of us. Tip lines work when people use them. Like, we can't, we can't do anything. It's parents, it's friends. And the fact that we have a fantastic tip line that is working should be better proof that anybody else who wants to use it, we'll never have a perfect society. But if we have a tip line that's being used and acted upon, so kudos to Dr. Hefner and you and Santana. Like, that is nothing better than seeing a good tip trace down and saving and making a difference in kids' lives. So kudos to y'all.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Warren? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move into old business and.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the second reading of policy IJOA.
All right, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion on that one? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion pass?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the second and final reading of Board Policy KFD.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Rucker? Any discussion on that one? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move for a second and final reading of proposed revisions to Board Policy BEDB.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion on that one? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we're going to move into new business now, and.
Mr. Chair.
We're going to turn it over to.
I move that we consider Amendment 2627, school calendar as shown in Calendar Amendment 2627.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any discussion?
Just a quick note. It starts with during the 2026 South Carolina Legislative Session. I think that should be 2025.
That's correct.
And so we'll just, if we could just re-upload the form. Okay.
My question was a point of order. Does it need to have a second reading? I felt like on the, on the calendar, we had to have two readings, didn't we?
We did have two readings on the initial calendar. This change is something that we have to do by law based on the provisions from state legislature, which is provide the teachers two days of professional development before the school year starts. So we want to make sure that we, we put that in there. And then that gave another day to spring break, if I remember correctly. So.
If, if we end up needing to change it next go-around, we can. But this motion just says consideration, not first or second, so we should be fine.
Okay.
All right. So we had a motion and a second? Any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the first reading of Board Policy GCLE and proposed, proposed revisions to ARGCLE-R.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion on this one? All right, no discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move for that we approve the first reading of proposed revisions to Board Policy BE and the proposed addition of Board Policy BEA live streaming board meetings.
All right, a motion and a second? Any discussion?
It's probably worth, we're going through these fast. It might be worth people noting that these are all laws that change at the state level. So it's not like we're just shooting through them, it's catching up to the law.
Correct.
All right, all right. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move that we certify delegates for the South Carolina School Board Association's 2024 Delegate Assembly. And by 2024, I think it should say 25, so.
All right, had a motion. And a second, we need to.
At this point, we need to discuss it, right?
Right.
Not a.
December 6th?
Yep.
Saturday, December 6th?
Yep.
I'll be glad to go.
I've been the last couple. I, I can go to this one, too.
Awesome. Yeah, Ms. Burkett.
Mr. Chair, I amend my motion, hopefully a friendly amendment, to nominate Ms. Rucker as primary and Ms. Burkett as an alternate.
That will work.
All right.
I do have a quick question.
Somebody needs to second that first.
Okay.
Just, thank you.
Cool.
I can, both can still attend.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yes.
We all can attend, right? We just have to have.
I don't have to have.
You got to have, I think we got three votes.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's three. Yeah, it's three.
That's right.
Yeah, we got three votes for our district size. I mean, I can go.
So are we amending it to include?
Mr. Chair, I amend my motion to say Ms. Rucker, Ms. Burkett, and Mr. Key.
All in favor of amending the motion?
Thank you.
Second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
May I ask a clarifying question? Please, Mr. Chair. Mr. Bray?
Yes, ma'am.
You talked about it saying 2020.
Five.
25? Where, which, which document?
On the agenda, so I think we're fine. It's just the agenda, so I think we're fine.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The documents are correct.
I struggle to read paper. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the three recommended travel requests, which is the Superintendent and Chief of Human Resources and Organizational Development Officer to attend AASPA in October 7 through 10. The airport course to attend the All-State course at Winthrop February 26 and 27. And L2IC Cosmetology and Barbering Students to attend the International Beauty Show and the Big Apple on March 7 through March 10.
All right, we got a motion.
A second.
And a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, that moves us into our announcements now. September 24, 2025 is early release day. October 9, 2025, end of first nine weeks. Boy, that flew by. October 10, 2025, in-service day. October 13, 2025, weather makeup day. October 15 is report cards issued. October 16, 2025, Fine Arts Hall of Fame reception and a packed lobby at 5:00. And then following that, October 16, regular monthly board meeting, District Education Center at 6:00 P.M. We will entertain a motion going to executive.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Board of Trustees enter closed session for the following: consideration of personnel appointments and resignations, legal advice regarding incident reporting.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are now moving to executive.
I make a motion that the meeting be reconvened in open session and appropriate affidavit executed.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor of the AI.
Aye.
Was any action taken and executed?
I move to approve the administration recommendation for resignations, new hires and appointments, support employees, and new hires and appointments temporary part-time employees.
Had a motion and a second, all in favor of the AI.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, we are adjourned.